Okay. There'll be other opportunities during the meeting. Um, other matters? That was your only matter. Um, board member comments? It's gonna be early night. Okay, um, moving on to committee reports. Do we have, um, Galen, Curriculum and Student Development?
Yes, we met today. We met at hand where Sarah Sandori gave a presentation about the new science course sequence, which offers more choice to students at hand. And then for the highlight of the day, we went to Mr. Russo's biology class and we saw glowing salamanders and DNA analysis machines, that's extent of my knowledge. And we saw kind of the fruits of the Board of Education's funding. They used pipettes and machines to analyze these things. That was very good. The rest of the meeting was a discussion of performance-based assessment grading and student profile sheets, which will be forthcoming. But I would encourage you to somehow see this play out. It was amazing.
Great. Um, communications, uh, I need some questions. Uh, communications committee?
No report.
Facilities committee? Seth?
Yeah, we have not met since the last meeting, so there's no report.
Finance committee?
Oh gee.
Mr. Barnaby?
Just a few things. So, the, um, the Finance Committee at that, as you all know, had requested from the administration a review of their original budget proposal, which was an amount of fifty-eight million, forty-eight thousand, and a hundred and two dollars, which represented a decline relative to last year's budget of roughly ten basis points. And the Finance Committee asked Tom and his associates in the administration if it could be possible to come up with additional cuts of an amount of roughly a hundred and ninety thousand, so that the total budget saving in absolute dollars relative to last year's budget would be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Now, that number's been characterized as arbitrary, I know, but the idea behind the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand was that it represented roughly twenty-five percent sharing for the community of the nine-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar reduction associated with the closing of Island Avenue School. And it was also, hopefully, a number that could be achieved without materially or negatively impacting the ability of the, um, the administration to deliver a competitive school program. And Tom and his colleagues got together and they in fact came up with an additional hundred-and-ninety thousand in cuts relative to the originally proposed budget from the administration. Those cuts fell into five areas. And when the Finance Committee met to evaluate them, Violet posed questions about two of the areas, specifically the area which relates to the reduction in monies for casual labor, and also questioned the, um, the reduction in the technology area. With respect to the casual labor, the idea there was, are we negatively impacting opportunities for young people to have that first job experience? Which research has demonstrated is very important for ongoing success in the workforce or the labor market. And in talking with Bill McMenon, he suggested that he does not teach reading, writing, and arithmetic, but he does have people punch a time clock. He has them there on a timely basis, gives them tasks, and shows them how to work with others. So it is an important job opportunity, particularly for students who may not be going on to a four-year program, or who may be looking to go to a two-year accreditation program. So, um, we decided, when we voted at the end of that meeting, that we would exclude from the recommended expense reductions, the reduction in casual labor hours. So, we removed thirty-two thousand dollars from the one-ninety that the administration had developed. Secondly, Happy questioned eliminating participation in the arts program that is offered in New Haven. It's a, it's a program in which Madison School System has participated for a number of years, and again, the Finance Committee elected not to include that expense reduction. So, of the five areas that we examined, we elected to move forward three areas. The vote was three with one abstention. The total amount recommended for additional reduction is a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, given the administration's originally proposed budget, which included a cut of sixty thousand relative to the previous year's outlay. That represents a total reduction of about a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars relative to the prior year's budget, or a decrease of thirty-two basis points, or roughly one-third of one percent. So those are the numbers that when we come to the consent agenda, that I will be moving to move forward for the board's consideration.
Thank you. Any other? Sure.
I'm wondering if somebody-
Never seen you in a lot of words.
Yeah. Trying to be delicate. I'm, I'm wondering if somebody from the Finance Committee could explain, um, what the Finance Committee's understanding during that deliberation was, as to what core allocation is? Because my understanding is that directly impacts, um, program by dollar-for-dollar eliminating school supplies.
Yep, Seth, that was not our understanding. And even though, to Tom's point, he, he mentioned that the parameter that we had given him, do no harm, was not, was not well-specified. The, the, the fact that the administration, working with that, with that parameter, came to us with a cut in that area, led us to believe that the administration was, was comfortable that this cut could be made without negatively impacting the delivery of the educational product for the educational program.
Can I stand on that too?
Why are you being so formal?
Well, I just didn't want to interrupt if you weren't finished. Um, so the other thing is that the, on the other budget sheet that was given to us by Tom, it said core allocation based on enrollment. You know, so it's reduced based on the fact that the number of students are reduced, so less students need less supplies. So the whole funding is, they receive funding one percent of the budget based on enrollment. It's not just a blanket, or, so if there's less students, then there's less-
But, but isn't the administration's original, um, recommended budget reflective of the number of students anticipated to be there? And so a further cut to the core allocation would be an additional cut, wouldn't it?
Yes.
To school supplies?
I would've said half of what Happy said. It is based on enrollment, and I think the only part that made us feel a modicum of comfort is that it's not something that next year will start out with a lower base, because it is based on enrollment. So, it is a cut to this year. So, you're correct in saying that per pupil, and then we have that, that extra, that exes, and we decided to take a chunk of the cut there, because it's distributed across five different cost centers, five different schools. But next year, we won't start there. We'll start with the same per pupil formula. So, it's a different concern with the technology one, because that does lower our base for the obsolescence replacement, and we have to build our way back up. So, each one we saw as problematic, but that was the advantage of that one, is the following year, we're going back to our per pupil.
Can I ask generally why this hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars, what's now a reduction from the original district recommended budget? Why that ended up being the reduction, as opposed to not just being included in the original district? In other words, was there, was it felt by the district and the administrators and the superintendent, that all the money, including this hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars that was recommended in the initial district budget was necessary?
Do you want to teach this question?
Great.
It wasn't our recommendation. It was, um, we were charged with the, a number, and to come up with what we would recommend with a very loose criteria, which I think anything in the school system, you could say is some programmatic element. We started with the facilities number, because we didn't recommend that last year, but trying to be consistent with our recommendations, we picked that number first. And then we had to meet with the team and go through and see which we felt were least impactful on kids.
So, and you're, you're an employee of the board, right?
Yes, Councilor.
Figuratively, figuratively stated, if, if the board or the Finance Committee asked you to walk across coals, you would have to do that, wouldn't you? Figureatively.
Well, I hope the Finance Committee would be a little more reasonable, Seth.
If you're having a problem. Seth, if I could just mention something, and this is more of a procedural comment. I think I mentioned this, but just very quickly for the record, I do sit on the Finance Committee, and I think Kirk did find a job representing the process. And there's been a lot of very good, good-fake discussions. My process comments are twofold. We've had two votes that Kirk alluded to. One, first was the vote of the committee to ask that the district come back with a hundred-and-ninety thousand worth of cuts. I dissent, I dissented from that vote. I felt that, a couple things. One is, I questioned the authority, really, and jurisdiction of the committee to make that request. And I, I felt that the, the request itself, the dollar amount, was vague. I was concerned about the process, and that, you know, our responsibility to be a partner with the district in maintaining a process, a timely process, was potentially compromised. And, you know, I, I felt that that was also evidenced by the fact that, as we debated the one-ninety and reduced it from one-ninety to one-twenty-eight, or at least the majority did, there and two seemed to suggest to me that this was a sort of a vague standard to begin with. So, just for the record, is, is my only concern, I think these are important discussions to have, but I thought it was equally important for me to voice my concern about what seemed to be a prescription. Was it semantic? And if it wasn't filled, did the district have to go back and come up with another one-ninety, or some change of that? I was just concerned that it started to fall apart as, as you started to dissect what it is we were exactly asking the district to do. And it just seemed to me that there was something, as I claimed, funky with the process. And when the ultimate recommendation, that's now part of the Finance Committee, to bring it down to one-twenty-eight, I abstained from that recommendation.
So, um, I would say- Um, I would say that everybody knows that I was hoping for larger cuts based on the things that we say. I think the things that we say up here are important. I don't think anyone ever stood up here over the last two years and said, "We are going to close a school and reallocate a million dollars to offset future spending." We told everybody we'd save it. That being said, willing to make a compromise, because the board did not feel for the majority the same way that I did, and so we asked to look for less money than what I was looking for. But again, compromising within the committee, because we are trying to work together as a board. The process is that the Finance Committee goes through the budget. That is, that is our board process. We have always done that. Since I've been on the board, we have never accepted a budget as proposed. We have always made cuts, and they've been line item cuts. This year, we asked the superintendent to propose potential cuts. We didn't make those cuts ourselves. Once he proposed them, we went through and did a line item exercise, looking at them. I would say that the ECA, is that the right name of that program?
Yeah.
That was sort of a non-starter anyway, because it was proposed to eliminate six students, but there were only three spots available. We would've had to yank people, so there really wasn't, that wasn't sort of a valid area to offer up in the first place. So, again, and I listened to all of you the last two weeks where you stood up and said, "Our concerns are programmatic." So we came in at something where we could do the best we could, given all of your concerns, and not eliminate programs. That being said, it's important that we try to stick to what we promised the town, because otherwise, we're just kind of meaningless.
I think, Happy, the only thing I would say in response to that is our, and you alluded to this, that our understanding of what we promised the town is different. My understanding is, as Board of Education members, we are responsible to be, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town, for sure. But we also have just as important an opportunity, or an expectation, that we'll maintain the value of the education that our students are getting. I think to suppose that this budget did not take meaningful reductions is, to me, not, doesn't illustrate the process that the administration went through, or that I recognize as meaningful reductions in the district's budget. And we can go through those, but closing a school first and foremost was a mandate from the town, based on declining enrollment, that we, we took. But we also have responsibilities to do things in response to the changing educational climate in the district. So, so yes, as I said last time, I think we part ways at the, at the how. And we agree that we have to be fiscally responsible, but I think, in my opinion, that the coming in below zero was a responsible budget. And not one that you see very often.
I just want to echo, to go back to the process, what Tom raised. I agree with Tom on all the points you've raised about the process and the expectations that were set. And I think I would've voted or abstained in the same way that you did. So I appreciate that. I do want to say that I think this is a great opportunity for the Finance Committee, while we're still talking about the Committee's work here in this item, to go back and look at the process overall. We've, you know, I, I've talked to probably half of you about this, but just to reiterate it on the record, I think it's a great opportunity to go back and think about, at what point do you start looking at a budget that's been presented? And think about programmatically, what could you offer if you add it to the budget? Ask that question to the administration, and then what would it mean to cut the budget? And if we asked you to cut the budget, what would you cut? What are the areas where you could be leaner if we need to ask, if we need to ask you to be leaner in this year? So I think having some kind of questions like that, and just get a year, basically, right, to think about that process, or the better part of a year. And I think you've got a good committee to do that work. So, so I would just encourage, again, to think about the process of it, and how you can arrive at a, a process formula that will bring you to multiple options prior to the presentation, or at the time of presentation.
Yeah, great. I think that's a, I think that's a great, I think that's a great point, and I was going to mention it in, in response to Tom, that, you know, this, this time, we got the, sort of the proposed budget, you know, with a, and I understand that this is where the process has gone on, so the, the process was absolutely adhered to. But in, in reality, I, I think we didn't have a lot of time to go back and forth with respect to budget, with respect to budget questions. And so I think as we go forward, which is a point that you're raising, I think we need to think about the timing of the, of the start of the process. And in fact, Tom mentioned in his comments that had he known that there was going to be an ask, it would've, it would've been beneficial to have had that sooner rather than later, so that the group could've worked on the best areas, or the most efficient areas in which to make reductions. So I think that's absolutely right. And I also like the idea that you discussed about having a higher option and a lower option. If you had more, where would you spend it? If you, if you were asked to do even less, where, where would the areas of cutting be? And I think, I think that, that's important. And then two other, that areas that I've discussed with many of you has to do with, you know, the filling of a small sampling, sampling, when we put our budget package together. I don't think we really need to go through all of the, the checks that have been cut for services, which have already been rendered, if clearly we're not going to not pay our bills. And then there's also an issue of how do we address the summary of where we are in the budget process as we go through the year, and are there line item exceptions that we need to evaluate or discuss? So, that's a digression for which I apologize, but I, and agree that, that the process needs to be reviewed.
So this is my second financial process, and the first round was a little confusing. I do think this one was, I guess it's a little smoother, and I do appreciate, and I thank you for accepting my letter and bringing it to the attention of the Finance Committee, and I appreciate, you know, the follow-up of the recommendation. But I, I happen to agree, because I go home, and that's when I start thinking about all the items in here. I don't think on the spot. So, that's why I obviously sent you that follow-up. Because the items that I saw as important were items that we canvassed on, if you recall. And I, I happen to think they were important. But, um, this is better, but we have a long ways to go, because last year was far more difficult to follow the process. So, if we get the information earlier, and we can toss, you know, ideas or funds if we want to, you know, reduce, the earlier the better. So I do thank you for presenting my letter.
So, my point of-
Also, in a way of constructive feedback on the process, I think it's important to not only consider areas ripe for cuts in a financial committee context, but also to consider, like, have an actual extract report that reports on the increases in contract costs that the board had negotiated in prior contact, contracts, that have an impact on that budget.
Well, yeah, no, absolutely. And that's, and that's, as, as we've all discussed, is a reason that the originally proposed budget came in where it did, because we had contractual increases that represented an annual increase in, in personnel compensation, two and three-quarters percent a year. Even though, thanks to the, the work that was done in moving from a lesser deductible to a high deductible plan, and the favorable claim experience we had, insurance costs went up. I mean, as, in absolute dollars. And finally, there were four positions that, that were, that were added, that we did not, that did not come up in the discussion of cuts relating to the literacy coach, speech pathologist, emotional development.
Elementary's bad outside.
I thought that was emotional development.
You've given it its own term.
But, but I missed, I missed the fourth one.
The SRO?
No, the, yeah, the, the, the security officer, thanks Happy, that we had agreed to take on to our budget, from the town's budget that they funded last year. So all of those, Seth, provide some significant offset to the, to the savings.
What doesn't get said, though, Kirk, when that lineup of those four, is that we cut an additional administrator beyond what the expectation was. We cut an additional teacher beyond enrollment decline. And just for the record, I want to make sure that we say that, because that wasn't part of the plan, and the admin team back there, you know, were the ones that kind of put their heads together to think about that, so.
Tom? Well, to be fair, we did ask you to look at that last spring in a planning meeting. We asked you, Jessica Buller and I asked you to look at doing that. So that is something that we did talk to you, if Katie were there as well. We talked to you about doing based on enrollment numbers.
Right, so, so the administration is being responsive then to the board?
That's great, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're seeing the same thing.
But that wasn't part of any of the budget assumption discussions? And the administrative, did I miss it? It wasn't?
Well, I think, asking you, us asking you to look at it was, it was the assumption of the current members of the board at that time, that that would be part of the budget discussions. That's why we had the discussion with you in the-
We had discussion here, it was never adopted, it was never the assumptions, and it goes, it wasn't in the budget assumptions.
Okay.
And it goes above and beyond what was asked of us, and it was done explicitly to offset what we see as a need in the district. So, we took the initiative to do that. You're welcome.
And it also wasn't done on the basis of pure enrollment, which is what you suggested-
No, it's a cut.
It was recommended-
It's a cut, but we were looking, when we did first, discussed it last spring. It was done on the, we discussed it on the basis of enrollment, given what the enrollment was at other schools, and what the administration looked like at other schools. So there was that discussion.
And I understand that from the outside, from a board member looking in, but the people sitting here know the work that has to get done, and it was the extra work they'll be taking on because of that. And that was a sacrifice that that team put on the table to make, in order to afford other positions that meet the needs of kids in our system. So I want to give the team credit.
I fully appreciate that, but there are-
But it hasn't been said, so I just wanted to give that credit, just to make sure we're clear.
Thank all of you, but I will say that things like that-
I thank them.
Oh, do you not want me to thank them?
No, you don't.
Well, I thank them too. I will say that things like that, those are the kinds of things that we need to look at to offset contractual agreements. You just can't have everything. If, you can't have everything. We don't have unlimited funds. We just don't. It's just not the way that it's-
But didn't, wasn't it said earlier that the administr, that the Finance Committee cuts every year? And some of those cuts are based on-
Excuse me, I've been here seven years, the Finance Committee has not cut all seven years.
I just said the years that I've been on board.
I know, and I'm just clarifying, because I've been here seven years.
So, um, and, and in recent, I lost my train of thought, but it had been said earlier that the, that, that the Finance Committee cuts every year. And I am hearing that out of recommendations that came from you and Jessica at a meeting I was at, I guess, but, that, that there has been response, that your requests have been honored and heard. So, I don't, I think that's where I struggle, is with this number, and I know you hate the word arbitrary, so, but I'm trying to, it feels to me-
He called me funky, so.
No, no, not you, funky, the process was funky.
Arbitrary is fine.
No, but to me, it seems like we're trying to hit a mark, and, which is fine. I think the committee can choose to hit a mark if that's what's important to the committee. It also needs to be important to the full board. When, when, and it needs, and so that's, that is the culmination of the process.
And it's really helpful that we know that in October, we're doing the budget too.
Fair enough.
Yeah, actually, Tom, I would think that if we could, we're getting you information earlier in September, that, that could even be potentially even more helpful. And I hope nobody inferred, from my having reported on what we did in the Finance Committee, that, that there was any questioning of the effort that had gone into the original budget proposal.
No, I don't.
Okay.
No.
All right, good.
But above the line, Stacy, is it point-six-five above the line? Which every contractual increase, nothing's below two-point-seven? And the above-the-line increase is point-six-five? And we've averaged two-point-five-eight overall every year, and if you net out island's debt, we're only a two-point-two-nine increase.
Yeah, I saw something.
The, um, can I ask, I recognize that this was a late-breaking item as well, but we did receive that report regarding the student-to-literacy coach ratios in surrounding towns and in the dirt compared to where we are, and we're quite low on that. And I had raised at the previous meeting whether or not we could get to plus-two literacy coach scenario, rather than plus-one literacy coach scenario. Was, I apologize that I was not able to attend the Finance Committee, but was that discussed at the Finance Committee? And if so, what was the discussion?
It was not.
Any other comments? Anybody else didn't get a chance to speak, who would like to?
I do have one more question, real quick, process-wise. Did the Finance Committee during its deliberations after the district's original recommended budget was presented by the district, did the Finance Committee specifically consider increasing expenditures, or adding to programs, as opposed to asking for cuts? Did, did the Finance Committee specifically ask the superintendent to come back with any additional recommendations? to come back with any additional recommendations where more could be spent as opposed to cutting?
We did not, sir. And that's, that is in line with the issue that very, very needed done.
We are going to, there will be more opportunity for discussion later in the evening. Personnel Committee?
Personnel Committee is not there since the last meeting, so the super board.
Policy Committee?
Policy Committee is going to start off with the great news that we have nothing for you to vote on tonight. So, we'll just discuss a few things that came up. You will see that you have second readings on your agenda for Policy 5110.4, suspensions, expulsion, exclusion from school activities, and Policy 5144, physical restraint, exclusion, exclusionary timeout. You've seen those before. I haven't received any comments or questions from folks. In between the meeting, we didn't add the one word that was missing last time. It's already in your packet, so that's been covered. We will see these once again for a third reading before we vote, so if you have anything, please feel free to reach out to me or anybody on the committee, and we will certainly take a look. And then we had discussion tonight, have our policy meeting about two policies that are not going to be before you immediately, but pretty soon probably. One is classroom observation. So, Lispetaglia was able to discuss with us that classroom observation policy that's been put out to the Policy Committee. It's in its early stages, you know, again, you'll be seeing that in the near future. We are working on some language there that's just hot off the presses from our attorneys. And we also talked about the policy review process. So, one of my agenda items as Policy Chair is to clarify 9610, 9620, and 9630, all of which are very repetitive, and at the same time, conflict with each other about language of how we are supposed to adopt and review policy. So, we're trying to narrow that down to a single policy on the topic, and I think we're getting a little closer to that. So, we will have something for you on that in the near future as well. End of report.
Thank you very much. Learn Liaison?
That was me, and I have, I was unable to attend, I think that was the same day, I had an issue with finance, but I have not seen the report out yet. That's come in, right? Okay, so I cannot report you on that. End of report.
Okay, thank you. I am, we're going to go out of order, just briefly, parliamentarian, because I am remiss in not acknowledging our representative, Noreen Copa Brudoff, for being here tonight, and I just wanted to offer her an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I've been at Hartford all day, so there's not much voice left. But I talked to Kirk yesterday, and I just wanted to talk to you a little bit. I've done a lot of work on MBR, because when I first got to Hartford, I didn't know what MBR was, because Madison, as one of our former superintendents has never an issue for Madison. And I think there was some misinformation, which someone's cleared up now, but I spoke to the Commissioner of Education today. They can bring in their finance person, and in three days, they can tell you what your MBR will be next year. As you now know, your money saved from your bonding has nothing to do, it's actually a net current expenditure, and it's the total education expenditure. It excludes student transportation, capital cost, supported by school construction, grants, debt service, adult education, health services for private school, which I think this town does, tuition, if you, income from any other state grants that we get, i.e. free and reduced lunch. So, and also fees for student activities. So, when you look at your MBR, really, years ago, to tell you the truth, it used to be the, and Tom knows this, the State Board, Department of Education said no to everything. And I put a bill up, and actually several of us did, and head of a board of Ed from Essex stood up and said, "We don't need that bill. We just need you to enforce it." What was happening was schools were, the first thing that really hit them was the decrease in population. And obviously, we know about that. Madison's actually got the largest decrease in the shoreline. Was a decrease in population. They weren't being penalized. Chester, Town of Chester, couldn't spend $40,000, put in for, you know, to be given consideration, and they wouldn't even meet with them. So, what we found out was, the Department of Education's philosophy was, "Let's not go there." That's all changed now. They have to go there. And just two years ago, the Town of Durham did exactly what you're doing now. They closed a school, and they actually had debt on the school still, and we were able to do legislation. I think they owe, still owed maintenance, $600,000. It's a regional school, some issues, but we were able to do legislation to make it work for those citizens, those taxpayers.
Noreen, was that special legislation that was for Durham?
We had a special to let them off the hook.
Yeah.
What it says is, if I have an avenue, still had some debt, maybe you had done a renovation project, and you were still paying it, you can't count it toward MBR. That's, now you can. So, that's changed. So, what I'm here to tell you is, the state is going to work with you, with MBR. They realize Madison had matters mass over in our 10th year of a decline, 10th year. We're in, we're closing our second school, so they know. So, when I told the Commissioner tonight that we were concerned, she said, "Certainly, don't worry about that. We will, they will work with you." And the Finance Director, Kathy Dempsey, will come here, and I think she can do it in three days. Do you know the word, Kathy Dempsey? They can do it pretty quickly, their turnaround. I mean, we're waiting.
Noreen, our concern was that, what was pointed out to Stacy and to me Friday evening was that the bill had not been, or the statute had not been reauthorized past this current fiscal year, so it left next year wide open.
So, we do know what was going on.
That is the anxiety more than anything.
Right. Well, I'll look into that. I think we did do an extension, but, right, what I have here doesn't say. But all I can tell you, assure you, that MBR is not going to be, should not be for you, an issue in your deliberation.
Right.
Now, the other thing is, I'm sitting here, and I just want to say, I also have 14 years of doing town budgets. By the way, my voice doesn't hurt. It hurts you more than it hurts me. You have to put up with this till March. I did 14 town budgets, and I know, I just was at your planning meeting last week about where you're heading. And when you have a big savings in capital, it's an opportunity. But what seems to have changed, and I wasn't aware of it, the opportunity was always for more capital, more capital projects. So, that was our opportunity to pick up some of those projects. I saw, showed Tom a report from a couple of years ago. I think it's still online from Connecticut News. They did a study of what the state has put into renovation projects. Madison is so far behind other towns. We have been penny wise and pound foolish. But, saying that, Katie, when you say that we're below the line, is that without the capital bond money, or with? Because that's very different. That's not apples to apples. And I think that's what the people in Madison want to know.
The only thing I'll say to that is, our budget went up every year when the debt was going up, and that was included in how we reported our budget.
But it was a separate line, right?
And...
When we do the budget, however, what goes to referendum includes upper debt in debt service.
But when people look at the breakdown. So, all I'm saying is, in the past years, when we've had a windfall, you know, when the debt goes down,
Yeah.
You really need to look at that as an opportunity to do the projects you really need to do, and you know what they are. And if you start to absorb that capital bonding money in your operating budget, I've lived here when budgets got voted down.
Yeah.
Be very, it's a slippery slope, so be careful. Capital money should be used for capital projects. It might have been part of your budget, but the fact, but it was part of your budget for one use. And I just, look, it's your decision. I'm saying, down the road, I remember being a young, a select woman, and I learned from a very smart selectman. He said, "Every time your bonding starts to go down, it's an opportunity to do a new project." And do, and believe me, you guys have plenty of projects they need doing. So, I just think, be so quick to take that $400,000 and to spend it on just operating. I think it's a slippery slope. It's not the way the town used to do it. I mean, it's certainly your choice, but just be aware, because when we go to the voters for these projects, it would be great to say, "We've got capital money that we retired, that we didn't touch, instead of we spent." I just want you to be aware of that. This is a new approach to me in budgeting for the town. It's not how we looked at capital. You looked at it as an opportunity to grow programs. I think in the past, the town has looked at it as an opportunity to take care of capital projects. That's just my two cents, but anyway, I really came about the MBR. Please know.
Thank you. It's so helpful to know. There were so many questions that it was unfamiliar to me, so...
This is something I got very involved with, because it's so unfair.
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, we shouldn't even have it. But there's a strong constituency in the capital that wants it, and we'll keep, but we try to make it fair. I mean, to ask a town that's closing a school, that's retiring debt, to spend the same amount with less kids is just the wrong, it's an unreasonable request to our taxpayers. So, thankfully, the Education Department now knows it.
They can't take any money from the town beyond what they allocate through ECS. So, that was news that I think we clarified that is...
But this is what worries me. I worry about what's going to happen in other areas. I worry, it bothers me that we're not in the top 10% anymore. And I do worry that some of those things that are called, I underlined it, you know this better than I do, Tom, what was that, accountability index course? That, to me, is a very subjective thing. And that thing, whenever sent up, has impacted Madison. It's impacted the reputation of our school. They have Guilford in the top 10%, and we're not, bothers me. It impacts the sale of our real estate. We belong in the top 10%. And I worry, if we don't work within the parameters of what the State Department is telling us, I do worry where that could go. I've seen it. I don't want it to continue to happen. So, you know, I'm so proud of our school system, as you know. I'm so proud of our teachers' evaluation system, even though we're the only one in the state, still a lot of compliance. I still hear that, but I know we did the right thing. But we do want to be, work with our state so that we don't get penalized in other ways. And I definitely, believe me, will work with Liz and Tom on finding out what we can do to get into that top 10% again. That's my goal as of tonight.
The only other thing, Noreen, I want to mention and potentially buy you to, is in terms of capital or facilities, is, and Kirk is going to present on it momentarily, but our tri-board committee, our subcommittee, which has two representatives from each board in town, has been amazing, meeting every Wednesday morning, really early, so maybe even before you drive up to Hartford. And it is really addressing some of the facilities needs that you recognize as well.
I know you're on top of that. I just looked at some of the work.
I wouldn't overstate it.
Yeah.
On top of it, we're getting there.
I was about to mean the other day. You know what, there's a lot on it, like, I'm glad I'm not sitting in your seats, trust me, but I just wanted to be of some help. And as someone who's been through many referendums in this town, and also pushed for a new high school, and whatever we can do for our schools, I just want you to be careful moving forward so that we don't wake a sleeping giant, and we get in a position where we're town divided. We all knock on doors and talk to our seniors on fixed income. We have, we cannot be here again and pretend they don't exist. Look, I've got two grandchildren still in the school system. My sons went here. They had a great school. I think my grandchildren had it even better, because of the work of some of you folks. So, I want to keep that up, but be aware, there's a big picture here, and as you move forward with your facilities, just be aware, at some point, we're going to have to go out for a big ask. Be prepared for it, and prepare our community for it. That's all.
Thank you. Really appreciate it, and thank you for the work you're doing on our behalf.
Do not want to put a level, get Kathy Dempsey to work with. It's not an issue for you going forward.
Thank you. Tri-Board Working?
The tri-board working room, as you know, has held its, what we believe will be our last public forum. We held that last week. Tom and I have completed our meetings with the Realtors unless someone calls and asks for a meeting. Tom has a meeting with the seniors tomorrow at the Senior Center. Austin from the Senior Center, in fact, came in and presented to us last week about the capacity or space that the Senior Center could use in addition to the space it already has, because they feel they've outgrown that space. Tomorrow morning, Scott Cogburn is going to come in and speak to us about the Madison Youth and Family Services space or capacity requirements. And at that point, I think we will have, with maybe the exception of emergency space consideration, completed acquiring all of the input from the community that we felt was appropriate before we started devising or developing the options that we want to bring to all three boards with respect to alternatives for, alternatives to the current $100 million repair and maintenance plan that has been much discussed. In any event, Tom, did I miss anything?
I think you got it. Scott tomorrow, seniors tomorrow. We're going to public forum discussion right now.
No. And while our, while our deadline, our drop dead deadline for presentation of the alternatives is April 1st, I would like to think that we'll be in a position to begin option evaluation in early February, and would hope that we could draw that to a close before the end of next month.
Thank you very much. End of report.
I can call any names on that one. That's not over.
Audience response to the information presented?
You know, my name's Pete Thomas. I live on Desert Island. Now, I've been twisted to attend a few meetings like Kirk, and I sit on the RTC, and so I'm biased to begin with, but I just want to say, a lot of what we spoke about tonight is retreading old approaches. And I think when we talked about the operating budget in the present year, and we talked about the needs for reform in future years, I think we should take this as an opportunity, not as a position to polarize ourselves. We're confronted with a lot of issues. We're looking at $100 million on the capital side. Most people don't separate the operating budget, capital budgets, when we're voting and stuff like that. I think we need to understand who's out there and what they're looking at. So, when I was talking to Katie, I said, "Some of the concepts are not about cutting but investing. Some of the issues that we're facing are issues that are of this generation, the opioids, the concern about the emotional health of students in schools, taking investments, changing the nature of what we have to do. We have to do it rationally. We have to do it cost effectively, but we have to do it collaboratively." So, what I would charge everybody involved is that we take a new approach, instead of being partisan to issues, that we try and find better solutions, take this as an opportunity to look at the resources that we have, the change in the nature of space, how that change in the nature of space might be an opportunity to integrate education for older people, who then will get a benefit and want to invest in the system. So, I look at this as a time that we should think about improving our own approach, instead of doing what we've done historically and measuring things historically, and look for this as a, as a place to re-engineer our approach to things, and take it in a positive direction. and take it in a positive direction, take advantage of what the finance committee does to, to make the opportunities presentable and passable in an environment where a lot of referendums go down, as we've seen in the last go-around here. I don't think people don't want to invest in kids or education, but I do think people don't want to play politics with it. I think what we want to do is we want to find out from Bill what the absolute bottom line costs are that we have to face, then from there, what the investment would be to enhance the opportunity to make that investment into the future. So that's all I would say. Thank you.
And can I bother you to just fill out one of those blue forms? Just with...
Everybody's wanting you to do stuff.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Our board clerk isn't here today, and she asked me to remember that, and it's the first time I have, so... So we are moving along to the consent agenda, and I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is it just discussion, right?
Yep.
Just both, all the items?
Yeah, that's how we usually do it, yeah.
Okay. I just had a question just to clarify that line.
Oh, the one that we tabled.
That was from transferring money from unpaid leave to...
Oh, header, yes.
So we were wondering why...
I think it maybe was read backwards. When somebody is on an unpaid leave, we move that unpaid salary to the substitute account to cover the person's salary that's covering the person that's out. So we are not paying somebody on unpaid leave. We are transferring money from the salary account to a substitute account.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. Motion carries. Thank you for reminding me about that. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the January eighth, 2019 Board of Education meeting. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oops, sorry. Oppose? Abstain. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the evaluation plan for the position of athletic director.
So moved. Second.
Does this come out of committee? Did we see any evaluation plan?
Oh, yeah.
We saw here. Okay.
Yeah.
That made it come.
The PDAC committee had vetted it, I know, and then came here, was it before the holidays?
Yes, it was.
It was a while ago, yeah.
It's been vetted several times.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. Motion carries. So the motion by the finance committee to approve the Board of Education 2019-2020 budget is made, right, by the finance committee, is out of committee?
Yes.
Is that the format?
Yeah.
Get the calculator on this.
One twenty-eight, one reduction.
Yes, that's the finance committee's revenue budget reduction.
Stacy, get the number. So with the reductions, the finance committee, a negative point three-two percent increase of the total budget for nineteen twenty, fifty-seven million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and two dollars.
All in favor? Oh, sorry.
You don't have a motion yet.
Oh, I don't have a motion. I need a motion.
Second.
I don't need this. That's a, that's a, that you need to discuss.
So have been moved out. Discussion.
I just want to say one more thing. I'm sorry. I'm going to keep talking, but I just want to reiterate that the finance committee did listen to all of you and put aside our thoughts that we should potentially have a larger cut, and we listened to your concerns, and this was a compromise on our part. And I just would caution sending the message that the budget is responsible enough. We should send the most responsible budget that we can send, and if we're not making programmatic cuts as you were concerned about, and we are making cuts here, then I feel more comfortable that we're living up to what we are offering the community rather than just saying it's good enough precedent.
I respect Happy, what he just said, and to some extent, I agree and I understand, and I thank the finance committee for taking time and being thoughtful and trying to bring a thoughtful approach. On the other hand, I don't think it's necessarily a fair approach to start out with a very large arbitrary number, set the superintendent to an odious task of, you know, find somewhere to cut anyway, even though you've already delivered us a recommended budget that recommends a strong program for our students for the next year, and then end up voting on, as a committee, a budget that winds up with a lower recommended cut, but still arbitrary. I understand from the finance chair that there was an attempt to tie the number to something so that there was, you know, maybe one can't argue that it's purely arbitrary, but when, when we hire a superintendent and administrators and set them to task to give us their best estimation of what it's going to cost to educate our children well in the following year, and then to, in good faith, develop that budget from zero each year, in good faith, keep good faith with the community over a course of years, seven years since Tom's been here, and to never ask for outrageous, absurd, or even unreasonable budgets, and then ask the other boards to accept that we are putting our best foot forward and we're not adding any fat to our budgets, and we're presenting them with a reasonable, sound budget that supports an excellent educational program for our kids, and we ask the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance every year to please respect whatever budget we put forward as a board. I think it's problematic to then go and ask the superintendent to, for additional cuts, and I think it creates an expectation among the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance that there's room to cut and still maintain the excellence of our educational program. So I think it's a dangerous precedent to set to arbitrarily ask the superintendent to make cuts that, that were not brought forward by the, by the district. And I just think it's unreasonable to expect more than a negative increase to our budget and to go by degrees further than that. And I would oppose this particular budget, and I would be in favor of going back to the district's original recommended budget of negative point oh-one percent increase or reduction.
Negative point one.
Yeah, negative point, thanks, negative point one.
Any other comments?
I have nothing to add to what Seth said. Do we need a motion to...
Motion is on the table.
Right. But Seth, this would be a different motion.
We have to vote on the one we've already moved, I think.
Right.
Right?
Not necessarily.
You can offer an alternative.
I don't, I don't know honestly whether or not the committee can amend its motion when it came out of committee.
No, but someone from the board can put us a motion.
Yes, but you'd have to resolve the motion prior to, the committee could withdraw it. But I think discussion's still ongoing, so either way.
And at the risk of restating the obvious, I mean, a new piece of information that's come up since the finance committee meeting, of course, is the MBR, right? And Noreen gave us the benefit of her experience that it's not going to adversely affect our decision. I think it'd be horribly ironic if they attempt to save money, we double up. And I will just say that when it comes to state politics, I'm worried that a verbal contract is not what the paper's written on. So I really want to be sure that, that it's not going to impact us.
I agree with Galen, and I appreciate that sentiment. My, my belief is that you don't want to get on any radar. You don't have to. And if we can avoid that in any way, that's a good thing to do. I appreciate and agree with the representative on the topic, and I think that most likely, right, we're not going to face an issue with our budget. Most likely, we're going to go move a budget forward, and it's probably going to turn out okay. And I've sat in the finance and financial aid and money world for a long time, in higher education, and you always work with that assumption, but it doesn't always turn out that way. So I, so I trust that it probably would be fine, but, but I have that fear as a starting point. And I want to echo a lot of what Seth said as well. Here's to me how, how this, how this has played out, and this is just from my perspective. So when I, when I first saw this budget, I thought, "Oh, fantastic. We're going to have a really easy year where we have a below-flat budget to present," right? This is, as I've described it previously, in my opinion, wildly responsible, something that means that we are going to cost the town less money than we did last year, which, as a starting point, you know, again, this is just when I'm getting the book. I'm looking at the book. I'm thinking, "Fantastic. This is going to be some easy nights. I'm going to, I'm going to get home and eat a bunch of snacks." It hasn't turned out that way. I think some of it has to do with disagreement about whether or not this is a savings, and you've heard my opinion on that. I think this is, depending on how you want to calculate it, somewhere between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars less than, than an average year where we go up. I think it was two point four, two point five percent.
Two point five eight.
Two point five eight, thank you. Two point five eight percent. And I trust, you know, this is the part that Echo said in particular, that the administration has put together a budget that indicates what they need to maintain the programs that we expect for our students. Whether or not some of the recommended reductions from the finance committee are programmatic or not, I think is debatable. I think some things here, to me, core allocations, are going to seem problematic no matter how you want to talk about it. I think anytime I read, "Buildings receive funding based on enrollment. This reduction will reduce the supplies, equipment, et cetera, available for purchase." You know, I, like many parents, get a list of supplies that we need to bring to the classroom every year. Very happy to do it. Happy to bring more than we need. Those tissues run out quickly. But, you know, I can't imagine that that's, that's a situation where that won't in some way affect the program that's available to students. That's, again, that's my opinion. That's my feeling on this. So, you know, I, I'm with Seth on that, that I can't vote in favor of the reductions that are recommended here for, for that reason, and for a little bit of the fear of the unknown, which, which I agree, you know, after having talked about it more, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a, I forget what we called it before, a, not a threat or a concern. We use several words. It's, it's a risk, a risk. It's not a risk. It's an unknown.
Yeah, it's uncertain.
It's uncertain.
The difference between risk and uncertainty is, with risk, you have some idea of the statistical distribution so you can develop a concept of odds, so you know if you're playing a game, what, what, what the odds are of winning. In an uncertain environment, you don't, you, you don't have that definition of the distribution, so you can't define the risk that you're taking.
And that right?
Or in a sense, going into a, in the unknown.
That, that's, that's why this airs on the education channel in the town in particular, not the other channel. If this is education, I don't think that right there made it worth it. So I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I agree. It is an... That was very positive.
But then, but that was after Seth, and the enemy would make praise.
So I think it is an uncertainty and not a risk. I agree with you, with you completely, Kirk. I will say, I'm disappointed, you know, we've been presented with information about the literacy coach. You know, I'm disappointed that we haven't engaged in a conversation about what it would look like to have a plus-two. Again, this is a year to me where, you know, I hope the town won't find a zero budget or a slightly below-zero budget polarizing. Maybe they will. Maybe they'll send back to us and say, "That's not what we expected," but I hope that they won't because I, I think that it's a reasonable budget to put forward, and I think it is reflective of the savings compared to what we see typically. And I, and I, and I had hoped today in a year like that, and I still hope it, maybe it's off the table at this point, that we would have a discussion about if there's a real need in our schools, if there's an issue that we want to address, if, as Noreen describes, we would like to be in the top ten percent, if that's a goal, if that's something that, that people in the town expect us to aim at as a board, that we would address some of those things programmatically. And I think the literacy coach can only help something like that and, and would fit into our budget nicely. And again, I appreciate the maintenance of the plus-one literacy coach in the budget that came out of the finance committee, and I'm referring here only to the plus-two idea for literacy coaches. So that's where I'm at with this budget, and I have followed along as closely as possible with what the finance committee has done. I appreciate the work, and I appreciate the intent to explore the process again next year because I think that's going to be really valuable. But I do, I do land where Seth is on this, and I, and I echo once again some of what Tom said about process and a little bit of what Galen said about uncertainty.
I have one more comment.
Nope.
I mean, obviously, no one has a crystal ball like most of the town. They have no idea what they're going to do. I think it is worthwhile to note that in the last election cycle, which was an contested election, right, there were more people running than there were seats. Every single person, not every single person, but there were three people elected who were fiscally conservative and spending conscious, right? Those three people aren't here anymore. You guys were appointed for their spots. This would be a very different conversation because they, they were certainly careful about spending. So I think that's important to understand, that we are elected by the town to represent them, and that's what the town elected.
I'm speaking for myself, but, and I think each of us in our seats, I think we are all doing what we think is best as individuals, so...
I'm not saying that anyone's not doing a good job. We're not doing what they think is best, but I do know that those people, what they're spending and how they voted, their voting record and the way that they dealt with finances, and it was very spending conscious.
I don't think we need to go into election and canvassing and the things that we all heard while we were doing so, but I think, you know, I appreciate your comments, and I'll just leave them there. Does anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make?
I, there's nothing more I can add to what has already been said.
Okay. Okay. So I will read the motion again. The motion is to approve the Board of Education 2019-2020 budget with the finance committee's, which is the finance committee's recommendation of, Stacy, check my math, point oh-three-two...
Point three.
Point three-two percent. Negative three-two percent, thank you. Fifty-seven million, nine hundred and twenty, and a hundred and two dollars. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye. Opposed.
So motion fails. Okay. I just wanted to keep track of that. Okay.
I, you know, I'll jump in here. I think also, consistent with what I've said in this meeting and other meetings, and also in my position on the finance committee, I would pick up on, and make a motion for approval of the budget I would describe as originally presented by the district. This is the budget that we refer to as being a point one percent decrease from the current fiscal year budget. And again, Stacy, correct my numbers if I'm wrong? That represents a budget of fifty-eight million, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and two dollars.
Fifty-eight, oh, four, eight, one, oh, two, correct.
I would make a motion to approve that budget for all the reasons.
Discussion. So as, as we have discussed the budget proposal for this year, I just first want to thank everybody that's worked so hard, the administrative team, and all the work that you have put in. Stacy, thank you for all the work that you have put in. Tom, thank you for the thoughtful budget that you put forward, and the board. I just want to acknowledge the amount of time that goes into this, and as I'm sure everybody has witnessed tonight, it's not an easy process. as I'm sure everybody has witnessed tonight, it's not an easy process. That said, I understand that some of the colleagues on the board might be disappointed with what seems to be a daunting budgetary number, but in my opinion, it's important that we don't forget our mission. We have a duty to guarantee the finest 21st century educational programming and school facilities for Madison families. We work to keep Madison an education destination, even while we endeavor to be prudent. Therefore, we can't let fiscal concerns be the primary factor for driving our decision making. That being said, we can't be frivolous with our requests. That means making tough decisions. This below zero budget has required many of those decisions. It reflects a second year pause in curriculum cycles, it has cut an administrator beyond the one that was expected with the closure of Island Avenue School, and it reduced staff beyond the declining enrollment projections. This includes our own very much appreciated board clerk, who's not here today. Finally, but not least, this budget reflects the closure of Island Avenue School, which was a very, very difficult and necessary decision for those of us that were on the board at the time, remember. We might disagree on the bottom line, but I'm making my decision tonight on the belief that this budget exceeds the expectations for responsibility and meets our educational mandate. It reflects a conservative approach without sacrificing educational excellence. This budget reflects the absorption of an additional school safety resource officer, the expansion of our instructional coaching program, and the support of a shared elementary school guidance counselor for our youngest learners. It also responds to the curricular adjustments and impact on resources inherent in the reconfiguration of schools. This budget is the right budget for this time in the town of Madison. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm going to reiterate my disappointment that we're not, you know, as the lone wolf out here in the wilderness discussing the literacy coach, that we are not considering a plus two for the literacy coach. I do think that it is inappropriate here to have that conversation. Again, items have been raised here tonight that point to the need for that. We have seen data from other towns that point to the need for that, but I recognize that that is maybe not the majority opinion at this point, and I'm, I'm willing to compromise and let that go. Again, I trust that the administration has put together a budget that will deliver the program, deliver the programmatic elements that we've come to expect from the town. I'll also say, as the only Island parent at the table in the last budget that will be passed when Island is open, that I think one thing that has been promised to the parents and the families at Island, everybody that's part of that community, is a seamless transition. And there are ways that we're going to meet that programmatically that I think are reflected in this budget. There are things that are maybe not necessarily there yet, but we're working on, on behalf of those parents and all the parents in the district, and all the kids, you know, that's why we're here. So I appreciate this budget being in place so that Island families and other families in the district can expect that seamless transition that we've promised.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're working on the point one.
We're, I'm sorry, I'll read it again. Motion to approve the 2019-2020 budget.
Representing the 0.1% decrease from the current fiscal budget, also the dollar amount being 58,481,200. You might, you might want to just add clarification, as presented to the board on December 28th, 2018. Just, just because that's when the package is from, just in case there's any questions.
Oh, that's when, that's...
Which one we're talking about.
Gotcha.
I'm trying to clarify.
Okay. Got that? 28. Hopefully it's on. Okay. Everybody understands the motion as stated? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Opposed?
I was opposed.
Okay. Thank you, I couldn't see you. Motion passes. There's no abstention. Is there any old business, future agenda items? Meetings and dates of importance are attached. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.